There we go. Carolyn, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Carolyn?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
We can. Now we got it. Okay, very good. Okay. Is everyone in? Okay, very good. To call the order to order the town on McCandless meeting of town council for May 9th, 2022, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Casey.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. As always, we start with the the culture and the way we want to run these meetings. And a little snippet, we will work together better at town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect. In the end, we are all neighbors. Some quick announcements, the history of North Park got rescheduled to May 11th. The town is seeking a applications for a junior council member. You can go to our website and apply there. The Heritage Center is having a golf outing on May 20th. If anyone's interested, again, that's on our website. I know Mr. Singer and I are looking for people to join our foursome if anybody wants to, is interested in playing. We're looking for personnel board members. Again, go to the website. The volunteer banquet to thank all of our wonderful volunteers in town is Thursday night. So I hope to see members of council and our volunteers there. And then the activity committee on May 21st has the treasures in the trunk. Does anyone from members of council have any other announcements? Nope. Okay. Moving on, we'll have public comments on the agenda items for this evening. We will go those in the room first and then those online second. If you're online, put your name and address in the chat box and we will get to you as soon as we can. So first up, Frank.
I'm Greg across just today for Edward Rowan and Kemos. I see that the agenda for tonight's meeting that there is listed under old business, the discussion of the zoning ordinance monetization progress. Any possible motions? Since there is not this public comment on this topic, on this agenda item, I thought I would say something now on the zoning orders. To me, the total lack of transparency surrounding appointment of the seven person steering committee, now referred to as the task force for the zoning ordinance was totally wrong. I have had to file a write to no request for the town council meeting minutes to find out when this task force was appointed. I also filed a write to no request for a copy of the agenda for this meeting. According to the response I received from the town council through the request that it was December 20th, 2021, minutes of the town council. However, there was no reference in the minutes of the council's approval of the task force. But an explanation was sent to me, and that is part quote, that a technical error during the audit recording of the public meeting in question resulted in minutes failing to thoroughly reflect the action taken on a matter of reference. Additionally, council president announced the formation of the task force under the announcement section of the agenda and requested head nod approval of the appointees which council provided. The agenda referred to in the quote must have been the announcement mentioned at the town council meeting and not the agenda published before the meeting even started so that people could could come and to town council meeting if they saw something on the agenda they wanted to speak on or hear. In other words, the actual agenda published before the town council meeting did not did not mention task force. Also, it seems to me that a head nod vote at a party meeting just doesn't make sense. So I definitely feel there has been a lack of transparency involved with the forming of this task force. My second concern is that since none of the seven members of the planning commission, except for one member who is a member of the task force, is allowed to attend the meetings, the task force held to date, I personally feel a lack of connection to the task force. I've also expressed concerns over lack of open meeting, over the lack of open meeting to the public of a task force meetings to date. And no mention to those meetings could be, and that those meetings could be a violation of the sunshine law. Now, the planning commission did have a meeting on May 3rd of just about a little over a week ago, or under a week ago, where representative Michael Baker outlined in general where Michael Baker was going with this project. RJ had provided the planning commission with links to some articles and a links to a draft of a Sussco Hannah zoning ordinance plus some information on storm water, which I felt was extremely helpful for something currently before the planning commission. In other words, it is more of a property. So the planning commission seems to be making some progress in being a player in the zoning law update project. The planning commission is still not allowed to attend some meetings of the task force. I believe there is only one more closed meeting. I personally would like to give this project's certain insight I have gained in my 40-plus years of living in Kemos. My experience tells me the sooner I could touch base with Michael Baker and his task force, the better. The experience I have would include certain definitions, for example, height of accessory building. If you're building something, even a garage, you'd have to have really complicated measurements. The term minor revision is another one. This interpretation of the term minor revision is one that got the town in trouble with its indoor firing range. My thoughts on accessory dwelling units, they do you. It seems to me that the Sussco Hannah draft regarding ADUs provided was broad enough to include trailers. Do we really want trailers potentially all over the McCandless residential areas? My thoughts on no impact home based businesses, especially that as it could affect minor streets such as side streets and streets ending in cul-de-sacs, where parents with young children may have bopped out their home with the expectation of their children learning how to ride bikes.
Great. We're gonna have to cut you off there. Okay, thank you for input.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here in the building that would like public comment on any of the agenda items? Nope, seeing none. We have anybody in the? Okay. Moving on. Now we'll move on to approve the meeting minutes of April 25th. Those were in the packet. Does anyone from council have any revisions that we need to make to this? Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Any comments from those in attendance or online about that? There's none, seeing none. Okay, there's motion on the table. Everyone in favor of approving the meeting minutes for April 25th, 2022, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We'll go to reports of the committees. The first one, public safety. Dr. Rafa, could you run us through those?
I will. Thank you. Start with our police department. Without a doubt, all these reports are in your packet, but as you can see, they were very busy this month with a lot of training and presentations as well as a lot of incidents. So Jake, would you like to?
The litany of training that we've attended this past month. From a two-day leadership school to the lethality assessment program that involves victims of domestic violence. We implemented a new tool for the officers, the Bola Wrap. Very low end use of force. Those folks that are passively resisting still for a few moments while the officers can take them into custody. We trained a couple officers on assisting persons with autism. And I spent the first week of two in police executive training on organizational development and such. Other highlights from my report, as you guys can see, on April 8th, officers helped participated with the North Hills DUI task force in the roving DUI detail. The stats are in the report. We had several arrests for DUI. I think it shows the value in the traffic stop at the end of that paragraph where they also had one individual arrested for carrying a firearm without a license and another one with an outstanding warrant. Also in April, on two different occasions, we assisted the volunteer group in collecting trash. Our officers ensured that did their best to ensure their safety as they traverse the roadways of the town cleaning up trash and such. And the other thing I was going to highlight was aggressive driving. With the warmer weather, speed is up. And April 20th, our officers, McCandless officers, conducted a speed enforcement detail. And as you can see, they wrote 34 citations. There's some other stuff in there. Did anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Next up is the fire department. And it's also, the report's also in the packet. And there were, I guess, numerous of fire complaints, fire company calls as far as false or real. So Jeff, would you like to comment about this?
The false alarms? Sure. Hopefully. Hopefully I've got this right this time. I've done a diverse introduction in the past regarding some of the calls that I'd put on here. So when you see the spreadsheet of the false alarms, particularly this for April, these calls meet, I'll say, the definition of potential false alarms. But then I have to research and dig into to find out if they actually are false alarms. So out of these, this list here, eight were actually false alarms and three were billable, or billable, I should say. So basically, five of them were first time offenders. So because they get one free for the year, then if they happen to do it again, then they'll be fine. Okay. One other thing, you had asked, can you just comment real quickly about strategic planning? So strategic planning was new to me when I first got here. I got fully messed into it right away. I was tasked by Mr. Graham with kind of coordinating, finding, researching the companies that could do the strategic planning that was requested. There were three companies that we had reached out to.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt. I think you mean the emergency management plan, not the strategic.
No, the strategic plan.
But but not for the town?
For the fire.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Because there's like two strategic plans getting thrown around.
This is the fire, the first.
Yeah, this is for the fire. So yeah, so out of three companies, we found only two have responded with quotes, proposals, and one, for whatever reason, with multiple contacts, emails, phone calls, they just will not respond. So I have that information to give to Mr. Graham and then, you know, whatever's decided upon, I'm sure I'll work in hand with that. So now the emergency operation plan, yes, that I've been working on a lot to bring our town's plan up to speed, to get it in line with Allegheny County. And I'm happy to say that I believe we're there. And I did go with Mr. Graham just the other day on the plan that hopefully you all will be able to review to hopefully at the next meeting, maybe vote to accept it or adopt it. But meantime, you guys will have an opportunity to address it and ask any questions.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. The next is on code enforcement and violation complaints. And this also is in the packet. And it seems that certain areas are being kind of targeted here with same complaints. And I was gonna ask.
Yep. Shannon is.
The ones, the ones about the sidewalks being uneven. It's steamside drive and pine oak. So it seems like the same same complaints usually coming from that same area.
Yeah, there are a number of circumstances right in that area where there were issues with the sidewalk.
Okay. The rest all seems pretty pretty much. It's just that that one stood out more than anything.
We're continuing to conduct the search for new code officer.
Okay. And permits, very active month for permits. You have this also in the packet. Are there any questions about this? Okay. The president.
Want to continue with the liaison report?
Okay. Liaison's personnel board, Carolyn Swiders.
So the meeting packets, I just have to let you know if you have any questions. No questions? Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Sure.
Volunteer firefighter steering committee, Mr. Singer?
We did not have a meeting in the last month. They are quarterly. So when we have our next one, I'll make sure to report. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Rafa. Does anyone in the audience want to make public comment on any public safety item? Don't see anybody in the audience. Anyone online? Nope. Very good. Others? Come on up to the, yeah, come on up, say your name and address and yeah, tell your comments about public safety.
Philip Pitts. I live at 141 Montclair Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 137. Well, there's a house next to us. It's been like kind of vacant, no one living there for like, at least over a decade. And today, like, not even like two hours ago, there's these kids, like, because now they brought that sheets up by the top of the neighborhood. Do you know, guys, what I'm talking about? So there's a house, right? That first house, it's right there. We live at that second house, you know? So these kids came down. My family and I were just like sitting on our back porch, you know, and relaxing. And I hear this noise and I see these three kids. They're climbing, you know, in this house and it's all boarded up, except there's a hole in the roof. Two of them climbed inside there. The one was waiting for them. As soon as they noticed we were doing something, gonna do something about it, they just all scattered. So we did call the cops. They advised we came here. So what I want to say is that something needs to be done about that. That house has been there way too long. I don't know who owns that. And now the house is becoming, in my opinion, a public safety issue because, you know, behind sheets, we have a whole neighborhood there. There's kids there. And, you know, this house, in my opinion, should just be like knocked down or like something needs to be done to keep it more secure so the public can't enter it. So the neighborhood's not disturbed. I don't mind sheets being there, but I don't appreciate the public coming in the neighborhood and interrupting, you know, the peace of the community and causing a safety issue because that's, that's not right. You shouldn't trespass and, you know, I'm trying to say. So I don't know what you guys feel about it, but I would like something to be done about that personally. You know, that's what I want to say. Personally, so thank you.
Thank you for comments. Maybe, maybe after the meeting, our police chief could meet with you and just at least start it off because our code enforcement officer is not here. Or that'd be a building inspector. We'll look, we'll look into it.
The piece of property he's talking about is 137 Montclair.
You're right.
Yes. And it's right behind sheets. It has two holes in the roof. And actually, you can look across the street through the top of the house. Middle floor is completely collapsed. It's, it's gonna, the whole house is gonna collapse within six months. So it's, it's imminent danger right now.
Yeah.
And Bob, Bob's more aware of it than I am. He spoke with the solicitor. Apparently, this was up for share sale twice. And both times it was withdrawn at the last minute for whatever reason. So Bob, did you have anything to add?
The hearing or the sale for the property has been continued several times. School districts agreed to that continuance. I voiced my concerns to the school district about ongoing postponements, did so again after you and I spoke this afternoon. The last complaint that we received in terms of any kids addressing, trying to get into that property, police department went immediately and then we had our public works department go down and board up
Right.
the property. We built the owner leaning, leaning the property. We're going through those necessary steps that we need to, but we'll turn up the speed on
Okay.
of what we're doing.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Pitts's contact info or?
If you, if you don't mind, I'm not sure that you signed in when you came in. If you just signed in with your address, then we'll follow up with you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Any more public safety, public comment? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Singer, could you lead us through the facility management? Sure. Stafford Burtz, under that is the public works activity report. In there, the staff report would be first. It was attached by Jeff, Department Head for Public Works. Are there any questions for Jeff? I think no questions. We'll move into the public works activity part. Under here, we have some presentations from our township engineers, Gateway Engineer, and alternative.
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, everybody. Dan Dazraff, Gateway Engineers. I'm here tonight. Kelly Harrington from our office. Kelly and I have been working on various projects. We hope to cover tonight some items on the stormwater list. First is the ordinance review. This ordinance was pretty much ready to go in 2021. We brought it back again in 2022, just to recap with the stormwater committee. Some other, some changes that we're proposing from what was, what was proposed last year to kind of finalize this and hopefully we can bring it to fruition. The second thing we want to talk about is the blazer drive number one, Holbert. Some options we've looked at for the pair of Holbert. Thirdly, talked briefly about the stormwater inventory of all the stormwater systems in the town. And then finally wrap it up to give council a brief update on the North Meadows Pond work, which is budgeted for in and out of bid currently to upgrade the pond up at North Meadows and the Forest Oaks development. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to talk about the ordinance review.
Do I have the ability to have my screen shared? Make that happen? Thank you.
Which is sharing? These presentations.
So I don't think I have the ability, says host, to see if we're purchasing some experience.
You should have it now.
All right. There we go. So good evening. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come here today. As Dan mentioned, I'm Kelly Harrington. I'm a project manager at Gateway Engineers. And I've been assisting Dan with a lot of the ongoing and new stormwater projects that we're here to talk to you about tonight. So to begin the stormwater ordinance 2022 revisions, as Dan mentioned, in 2021, we were coming to the completion of some revisions to the ordinance and these rolled over into 2022. So in discussion with Mr. Graham, we wanted to engage the new stormwater committee and give them the opportunity to have some input on this as well. So that's why I'm here to, with you tonight to talk through these 2022 revisions. So there's three main areas that we did cover. The first change that you'll notice is that we are ensuring that the ordinance is not being relaxed in the area of design requirements. The second item is that we want to ensure that we are, excuse me, we are removing any sort of potential, whoops. It's the wrong one. Apologize for this. There we go. Now we're, now I'm here. All right. So.
Nope.
Why is it that keeps going from, oh? It's user error. There we go. Some current slide. Thank you. So as I mentioned, there's three areas that we want to cover with you tonight. The first one is to ensure that the ordinance's design requirements are not being relaxed in this update. The second one is to remove any sort of inspection or operation and maintenance responsibilities of privately owned facilities from the town. And the third item is to clarify that the town will not take any ownership of additional stormwater management facilities in the future. So touching on the design requirements, the first item that we are changing is we are going to be reverting back to the requirement for facilities to slowly release runoff from a one-year 24-hour storm for at least 24 hours. So the reason we are reverting back to that, which is currently in the the existing ordinance, is just to ensure that we are not relaxing that requirement. It was previously adjusted to help reduce the number of modifications that applicants were coming in and submitting because this was a common item that we would see. But ensuring that this is a part of the ordinance at least gives applicants the opportunity to try and meet that slow release requirement. And if they can't meet it, then they'll submit for a modification. So that's the first change.
And there were a number of modifications typically requested of this, but the committee felt that better to ask for the modification and try for it. So that's why we kept it in.
Yep. So the, you can ask questions at the end or as you go. Whatever you would like. So these that we're bringing back to, are these minimal standards? Are they optimal standards? Are they best practice standards? What, what, what are they? Where are they? Sure. So it's a mix. In this case, this is more of a strict requirement that was in place in the ordinance. The minimum requirement, I would say here, is set by the DEP, which is also reflective in our ordinance. So applicants already have to meet this one. This requirement just takes it one step further.
It's more strict.
Yeah. Thank you.
I guess I had a question, Kelly. Like, like, can we benchmark this against our other communities? Like, you know, our town has flooding issues. We want it to be strict, but we don't want it to be overly strict so developers don't come to McCandless. So how do we, though, you know, I don't understand the technology and stuff.
It hasn't stopped them, Mike. It won't stop them. I think, I think it's, it's, it's a balance to try to do a little bit more. At the same time, if, if the developer can meet the requirement, like for instance, some dialysis clinic
Yeah.
is an example, the one that became before town council, they were not able to meet this requirement. So they asked for a modification, which we recommended. And again, it depends upon the type of facility that they're building, the discharge point. It really gets down to the It really gets down to the stormwater weeds. I don't, I mean, this is, this is, this, it's a detailed analysis. They would have to go an extra step, but it's not going to break the bank.
And that cost is on the developer?
Oh, yeah.
That's I just want to make sure that's aware.
Yeah, I guess on a scale of one to 10, 10 being extremely, you know, difficult regulations and one being none, where, where would these fall?
Say eight or nine.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, yeah.
It's strict, but not.
Tough work. It is.
Yeah, it is a tough one.
My question. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else on that? Okay, so the second design requirement that we are going to be adjusting is that we will be requiring aggregate to be considered impervious in post-developed conditions. So in our previous revision in 2021, we were aligning the ordinance to a manual called TR-55, which presents what's called a curve number for all different coverage types. So we were trying to align the ordinance to that manual, which is what the PADEP uses. So this requirement to have aggregate, so gravel, for example, treated as impervious, is a more strict requirement that, for example, if someone comes in and says they're going to put an aggregate driveway in, this prevents them from paving it in two to three years or so. So it just kind of covers an additional scenario that we could see. And I would say this is a pretty common adjustment that you see in ordinances elsewhere to have aggregate material considered impervious.
And the effect would be like, for instance, if somebody's going to come in and build a new house and they want only put it in an aggregate to begin with, but down the line, you know somebody's probably going to pave it. So you just make your facility big enough to accommodate the paved surface in the future. And again, it's a part of many ordinances. So if this, if this cleans up, cleans up.
So the third item is to require a 40-inch clearance between the bottom of an infiltration stormwater facility and the water table or bedrock within floodplain specifically. So currently in our existing ordinance, what's called a limiting zone, so that that distance, that clearance you can have between an infiltration facility and bedrock or water, a water table, it's thrown around as both 24 inches and 48 inches. So our previous revision had it all aligned to 24 inches, which aligns with the DEP's requirement and is a pretty common practice in Pennsylvania. It's hard to get more than 24 inches of clearance between the two. So this requirement here, making 48 inches within the floodplain specifically, is, is just a more stricter application. So if someone comes in with an above-ground facility in a floodplain, this is a measure that can help flooding, kind of give that facility a little bit more distance before water would hit the water table. So that's the third change. So the next item is that we will be reverting back to a 12-inch minimum freeboard requirement for open vegetated channels. In 2021, we were proposing to change that freeboard, which is basically the distance between your, your top of your water and then the top of your ground surface. We were proposing to make that six inches. So in discussions with our 2022 stormwater committee meetings, we thought that having it go back to 12 inches is a better scenario in the case that if someone's out there and there's a vegetated channel, we don't want them to be filling it in or to be, you know, just forgetting that it is a stormwater conveyance system. So this is just a more strict requirement to ensure that facilities are operating as intended. So the last design requirement is just requiring and clarifying that we will require a 48-inch, a 48-inch diameter manhole with steps as access ports into any underground facility. So the intent here is more clarification. We don't want someone coming in and putting like a six-inch cleanout on an underground detention tank. So this way, we put it out front, upfront and tell any applicant that you have to have a manhole that can be accessed by a person just because these underground facilities do need to get, get maintained and operated and should provide access for a person. So that's the summary of the design requirements.
It's going to be a test later on. Any other questions on the design requirements?
Great. So the next two sides I'll cover really are the operation, maintenance, and ownership requirements and responsibilities of the town. So the two items I have here listed on the town are some adjustments that we've made to wording. So the first statement here, all facilities shall be privately owned or owned by a homeowners association or similar entity capable of carrying out maintenance responsibilities. And in certain cases, as deemed necessary by the town, the town may accept an offer of dedication. So this statement was added to our operation and maintenance section of the ordinance near the beginning, just to get it out there to all applicants that, hey, the town doesn't want to take on more facilities. We already own 60-plus. This is going to be on your, your association or your entity that's going to be responsible for the management. And it's the town who has that decision to make that call if, you know, the town feels it's, it's necessary to own a facility. So this kind of aligns down with the, the next item I have listed. And I just want you to focus on the underlying section, which is the change here, where we're requiring inspection reports submitted to the town every two years. So this requirement is for any owner of a facility, moving forward, will be required to submit reports to the town. So the town has it on file that they're owning, maintaining their facility in accordance with their operation and maintenance agreement. And this will go into some of our later conversations too about our inventory and inspection, just to help us get up to speed and really understand what our facilities look like and how we can ensure we're doing our best to prevent flooding issues.
Yeah. As I'm sure you know, the problem is that homeowners associations do not last. And so they go away after 20 years. How will this be enforced? How are you going to know when a homeowners association goes away? And who will assume that responsibility positively? Because that's where our problems are coming now. We don't have that. And now the town's left with a not maintained area.
So we have two answers to that. So first off, as a requirement of MPDS permits now, that means that any site that does over an acre of disturbance is required to get a federal permit. As a part of that federal permit, there's required to be a long-term operation and maintenance plan for the facility. We call it a post-construction stormwater management plan. And within that plan, it defines responsibilities that ownership is notarized, it's recorded. You have to provide the essence that who's going to take care of it. So there won't be that loss in the chain of title. Like if, if an HOA goes out of business, then somehow somebody else is going to have to take over that responsibility. And that's on the federal level to watch. The second part of this, we talked about it within the committee, and I think Kelly's going to touch on it next, is that we, we feel that we need to, as a part of the operation and maintenance of these facilities, represent another community that's had this problem for a long time. And what we thought was that within the agreements that we require for operation and maintenance, that there's a collection of money upfront, that the town always has money available, whether it be the ability to go in and do some work or escrow to do some work, or I'm sorry, do the work or actually examine the work, whatever, whatever the cost is associated with the work. There's to be, you put $5,000 in an account to fund with developer, let's say, I'm going to pull doing this facility up on the hill where he's just finishing the development. There'd be money put aside and then that money, anytime it's used, it's replenished for, by, by whoever's ever in control at that time, whoever had the operation and maintenance. We have to review this further with Steve, but it, it's been used in other places. And I think it's one way to make sure that there's responsibility going forward. So there's, there's two, two places where they'll be responsible, one on the federal level, one on the town level.
Sure, to expand upon what Dan said, this stormwater facilities maintenance and monitoring agreement is a proposed agreement currently in place. The ordinance has what's called a long-term, a long-term stormwater facility maintenance fund requirement. And that is basically, you know, owners pay an estimated fee to the town that covers 10 years' worth of inspections. And there's a statement in the ordinance that says after 10 years, the inspections are performed at the town's expense. So obviously, we all know after 10 years or when your issues are going to start happening and you're going to see these older facilities. So to pull that responsibility off the town, we would implement this monitoring agreement to always have a balance of, we have $5,000. And if the town ever needed to do anything on those facilities, they could pull money from that fund. And then that fund has to be replenished back to $5,000. So there's always funds available to the town to perform any sort of maintenance, maintenance work that would be required on a private, privately owned facility.
And that number could be adjusted from time to time for inflation and other things to just be covered in a fee schedule or some other, some other way to handle it.
Yeah, I did want to note too, there, right now in there as well, we do have a $1,000 fee just to cover the town's time to prepare the agreement, to execute the agreement with any applicant that is coming in. So that's a summary of the changes. Does anyone else have any questions or clarifications that they would like?
Yes. So some of it's Bob and some of it's Tricia. And so we're going to, people pay fees for each of these storm ponds. And we're going to have to manage that, understand what that balance is over a 10-year period and either take from it or add to it or contact, is that?
No, the idea would be that the property owner maintains the facility. If they don't, this is an insurance policy, this is an insurance policy. That we have to go get an act that we're not acting out of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will, we will still require, you know, easements in place for the town to be able to access the land. That's not changing. So this is just more of like an emergency fund. It's there for the town to use if it's a, you know, a public nuisance, a public issue.
Yeah, like if they don't submit their report every two years, then the town's going to say, you either submit a report or we're going to go after a charge and take you from your fee.
Thirsty. I guess the second question I have is for one of these, like, we're hearing this. Well, this is something we need to vote on down the road. What, what's the path for this?
Yeah, it would be in the, in the proposed ordinance. If there's feedback from the council, I'm sure Dan would like to hear it. I would like to hear it. I know I've already started to review it from the legal side of things and have some comments. So we're still in the development stage of the ordinance, probably toward, we're headed towards the goal line. And, you know, we could be ready in, in a couple of months at the latest to adopt this. I think we talked about also asking some of our others.
Yeah.
Planning and EAC to maybe take a look at this too.
Yeah, just.
It's a good idea.
Comment.
Yeah.
So that it can be incorporated into the final draft at the council.
We still have the public here as well, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
On the ordinance, it says, yes. Plenty of time for public.
Yep. You know, I'll ask it to the, to the council, I guess. I'm still struggling with how, how severe this is or how lenient it is. You're an expert in this stuff. Is it too strict? Is it not strict? Do we need a, a, an independent in engineers? I mean, you guys are, it's, it's not about the technical ability of KPA. It's just a second opinion. So your thoughts?
The best way I can tell you right now is the modifications you're seeing now basically took it back to what it was. We never, we haven't made it more strict than what it already currently is right now. So most of the stuff that we reviewed is already in our existing ordinance. We just haven't simplified it more simply. So is it more strict? I don't think it's any more strict than what we've had. You know, we did not simplify in the sense, we still allowing the ability to come in and ask for modifications. But the specifics of, you know, where we're more strict, a 38-inch depth in a floodplain in an infiltration facility just does not make a lot of sense. You're not going to get infiltration in a floodplain. So making it, you know, infiltration facility should not be in floodplains. And that strengthens that part of our ordinance. The, the swale issue becomes instead of a six-inch buffer, instead of a 12-inch, over time, what we've seen in the town is without maintenance of these, they deteriorate, they cause further problems. So keeping that 12-inch helps to alleviate long-term issues as well as it provides more vital impact because it creates a larger area for that swale to be. That's one of the, where it doesn't follow the DEP manuals, our swales will actually be larger, more green space, more stormwater control, whereas if we follow the DEP standards, they're smaller in size and more prone to failure. So those are kind of the offsets of what we're chasing. But again, at any moment, they can come in for a modification as they've done in the past. Thank you. That's my opinion.
Since I may, I think I prefer to lean on the stricter side as well. Mainly, probably reasons, number one, I don't think it's stopping developers from coming to McCandless. They're going to come. If there's an acre of land, they're going to find something to build on it, no matter what at this point. Number two, if we start to say, well, we're worried about competing with so-and-so town, we're neglecting to think about our neighbors that are surrounding these developments. And so we really have to keep those people that are already here focused as well.
Okay.
The next one that we'd like to talk about is the Blazer Drive culvert number one. This is the culvert that exists at the intersection of Blazer, Blazer Drive and Inverna Road. This existing culvert, it's corrugated metal pipe, a structure that was built sometime in the 1970s. It's at least 40 years old. It includes three elliptical sort of squash pipes that measure about 24 feet by 16 feet. These culverts have exhibited what is expected at this point in their age. They've reached their design life and repairs have been recommended in the PennDOT Bridge Report of October 2021. We verified the repairs and we recommend a little more long-term approach to the structure. And Bob and I have had discussions of this over time and, and the town has put this in budgets. But one of the questions that was brought to me was, did we consider any other alternatives to this? And really, the, the direction, when we first started this project, was it was going to be the same as the other two that we already replaced. When I looked at it from a perspective, is, is there another, other alternatives? Yes, of course there are. So just to give you an idea what this looks like. So this is the description. It's a three-cell culvert. You can see there's, it's corrugated metal. You can see the inside of the pipe. It's elliptical pipe. It has a corrugated metal bottom. The pipe is actually filled with debris in there. That's sediment that you can say laying in the bottom of the pipe. But what you'll see is some deterioration around the bottom. You start to see some, the panels start to pull apart at the top. So these have all been identified in the PennDOT Bridge Report. So what we're considering is how do you rehabilitate a pipe like this without just ripping it all out and putting it new? So one of the options is to use a process called a gunite repair. Gunite is a cementaceous process. Essentially what you're doing is replacing an old pipe. You're using the corrugated metal pipe as a host pipe and you're building a new pipe inside. You put reinforcing in it, you spread concrete on it, and you create a new pipe within. Much more efficient. You don't have to rip anything out. It gives you better flow characteristics because it's a smoother pipe, so it can carry as much water even though you're taking up part of the diameter of the pipe. So we've used it in a couple of other projects in the town already successfully. And actually here, we looked at two different options. The first would be to consider the, the lining of the pipe from what we call four o'clock to seven o'clock. If you consider the pipe being round, that's the invert repair. That's one option. The second option is a full diameter repair, which essentially is a full, a full, new full pipe. So those two options were considered along with the, the actual bridge replacement. This will give you an idea when we replace the Blazer culvert. Big operation, very expensive footings. You're building a big new concrete structure. You have to rip everything out. You take the road out of service for a period of time, subject to a lot of unseen subsurface conditions that can occur in these types of situations. So very expensive. So long and short of it, when you look at the three different options, the option of a partial repair is about $609,000. The full repair is at $993,000 with a complete con span installation similar to the other two bridges is about $2 million at this point. I think we did the other ones for a little over a million apiece that are on, that have already, already been replaced. So given this condition and we still have the opportunity here, we think it's in the best interest to follow the, the number two option. If, if, that's our recommendation because you're going to get essentially the same lifespan out of that as replacing with a full new bridge. So from that standpoint, it seems much more worthwhile to go this direction. So from that standpoint, it seems much more worthwhile to go this direction. Uh, the engineering has been budgeted for this year to, to, to come up with the alternative and then be able to put it out for bid next year. Would be budgeted for, for work next year. So we've sort of held off on the engineering till we brought this back before council. See where council wanted to go and, uh, we, we can take it from there. So I can answer any questions related to that.
Is the, I'm sorry, this, does the cost include the engineering fees or no? Um, that's in addition.
That would be in addition, this is just construction.
That's just construction.
Yeah. There, there's a lot less engineering, uh, for option number two.
Two.
Yeah, it's very, it's, it's, it's much, much more straightforward, uh, and, uh. You know, not traffic control to worry about, but, or, or a whole host of other things that have to occur with, with number, with number three. The other thing to remember, no matter what, as a part of this, and this is included in option number three. There's still about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of repairs necessary on top of the bridge. So whether you go option number three or option number two. You'd still wanna repair the road on top because that road is deteriorated and the, the islands need repaired. Uh, the pork chop that's in there, the, uh, the, the concrete median, the guide rail, everything should be done on the surface there regardless. That's something could be budgeted through your normal paving program to do that work if we went with option number two. So in other words, we could, we could go ahead, get option number two completed and then budget for, for the, the work on the top of the surface. Through, again, through some other.
Damn, but option three takes care of everything.
Correct.
I thought that part of Blazer Jar was in the budget for this year.
The, from McCandless Drive to where they finished the paving. Two years ago?
Yes.
Is what we have in the budget. We've been holding off until we knew what we were doing.
Dan, let me ask a question. Are we certain that, uh, option two, it is a complete circle pipe?
Yes.
We are certain of that. Okay, I'm saying what's actually in the field. Are we certain that it is actually constructed forty years ago with a full bottom? Or do we know is it sitting on footings?
It's a corrugated bottom.
Okay.
So we're gonna take all the, 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 this. Pulling all the material out of there all night away and then spraying the.
Just wanted to verify that.
And, and, uh, option two, all that top work. Do you have any idea ballpark figure of what that's gonna cost?
On, on the surface?
Yes.
About a hundred and sixty thousand is the cost of the surface work with between paving and concrete work. In the median, yeah, just in that short section of wood bridges, that doesn't include the full bridge, just, just repress from, from Inglemore as you take it out over three inch.
How long has this process been around?
The guy process, I started doing it probably, probably fifteen years ago. Uh, we have a picture of one we just did last year. This was over on Brittany Place. This was a small culvert that we did, it was just an arch, it didn't have, it didn't have a bottom in it, uh, I think pretty satisfying, I would say Jeff. You, you, again, any of the in situ methods, I'll call it, where you, you actually can repair a pipe from within, it's very popular. Uh, Mr. Sabina, for years here, I actually went in and put liners inside of our corrugated metal pipes. So we did a lot of that work that didn't require, anything that you don't have to dig up is obviously gonna be a lot cheaper.
But we wanna make sure it's gonna last. And if this is a new process, is there a guarantee that this is? That this is, I mean, if it's only been around fifteen years, how do we know it lasts forty years?
Well, it's concrete and steel. We know about concrete and steel, it'll be okay. I'm okay with concrete and steel anytime.
Yeah, I'd like to point out the other two bridge replacement projects that we did for bridge replacements, you saw them in the Pendot reports. They're already showing up for repairs and stuff. So you're, even with a brand new bridge, here we are ten years later from the last ones. They have repairs from Pendon on them. So that's, just because you buy brand new, it's still concrete and steel.
Do we have other bridges in our town like this that we need to be concerned about?
We do, we have one other one that's on the list, yes. We, there's.
No.
Oak Ridge is the other last one in the concrete valley of the steel corrugated.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, McCandless, at the time of McCandless was developed, corrugated metal pipe was the. It was the material at the time.
Cause the Oak Ridge one is forty years old too.
Yeah, that's when they start, start to, start with that.
Do we need to select something, Bob, to at least point them right in their direction for the engineer? Cause the engineering is budgeted this year?
The engineering is budgeted. And I. I, they, it makes sense from a, and perspective for the engineer and for staff to know what direction. Would like to go. So that we can.
Yeah, we have to get a permit. I, I feel if I was gonna put this project out for bid, I'd get the permit in hand. And then get the project out and on the street as soon as, as soon as, uh, able, you know, like towards the end of the scarcity, you'll be able to jump into it. Next year, as soon as conditions permit, get it on somebody's schedule.
Can we just? Do we need to vote or anything? Is it just more just a, an agreement or?
I'd like to make a motion for option two, the complete gunite repair.
Do we need a motion?
I, I would, yes.
Okay.
This is not the, the motion is not on the agenda.
You, we could do it in two weeks. Your call.
I will draw my motion. When do we think about it?
I, I, I was gonna leave it.
Leave it that way then.
Yeah, then everybody can do any, any research, sure. Okay, thank you. We'll vote on that in two weeks.
The, the next item that we'd like to bring to your attention is the, uh, uh, stormwater inventory. Of the stormwater facilities. And speaking with the stormwater committee, uh, one of the concerns is in terms of. Even considering, uh, some sort of a stormwater fee going into the future is the cost of, of cleanup of all the sixty plus ponds. We manage some of those. So, um, what we were asked to do was to. Put together a proposal to get out and bring this information all up to date. So I'll let Charlie speak to that.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, so the goal of this project is, uh, to, to inspect all of the sixty plus town-owned, uh, stormwater management facilities. Which would it, uh, currently includes above ground and below ground, so, uh, you'll have rain gardens, uh, detention ponds. So, uh, the goal is to inspect all those facilities, uh, document their current, uh, site conditions, um. And inspection reports, which would be brought up onto a G I S platform, so it's a living document. Um, and then from there, uh, once we complete field inspections, we will determine required maintenance or repair items for each facility. And we will complete a opinion of construction cost to conduct this maintenance or repair work for every facility. And we will provide that opinion to the town for review. Um, and the long-term goal here is to provide resources to the town. To, uh, use an online G I S tool, um, to perform inspections, um, and to have this be a living document where we always know what our. Uh, statuses of each pond for underground facility. Uh, so what I have shown here is a snapshot of our current G I S map. You'll see a bunch of, uh, red and blue dots throughout the map and these are, uh, existing private and town-owned facilities. Um, the facilities that are in blue are the town-owned facilities. So our plan is to use this map as a basis and really grow our platform from what the, uh, the information that we already know. Um, so that's the first part of our project. The second part is, uh, refining, um, our inspection form. Um, so right now, we do have an inspection form that we have used to inspect facilities. Um, we really wanna work with the stormwater committee, um. And the town to just really improve upon this and make sure we're capturing everything that we need to inspect out there. Um, and working with the Department of Public Works to ensure that everything, um, is in this document and we will take this document. Um, upload it into our G I S platform where we can have our, uh, inspectors and engineers go out to the facilities, take pictures. Uh, document right there in the field in an efficient manner, um, what the status is of that facility. So.
I thought Mark Sabina needs to do all the inspections of our facilities.
So, um, we do have some documentation of dates that inspections were completed on a current mapping. Um, I don't believe that we have the actual inspection reports, um, on file. We just know that they were inspected. So the goal here would be to make sure, you know, moving forward, we can have the actual report uploaded and, uh, for view.
So Public Works would do this or?
No, the idea would be that we would go out at least one time to get it all put together because there's. We don't know what the cost is to bring all these facilities up to date. So we would go out, do a full current inventory, bring everything into two thousand and twenty-two. How much work needs to be done? Does there need to be work to be done? Trees cut, debris moved, access roads cut in. All those different, different sorts of things, uh, put that together in a budget and then bring it back to the committee. And I think that, that, that's where, I think the town council may get their eyes opened up in terms of what the cost will be to do all that work. And it may inform your decision whether you want to charge a stormwater fee, at least that's, at least for discussion. So I, I, I know Mark did certain work on, on certain facilities and there was work started on some of the ponds. But we're talking about being comprehensive here and, and looking at everything at one time. So some of them may have already worked done, but, but there's not a good documentation of this. The idea of putting it in the G I S format is that we also have a permit, our M S four permit. If the regulators come in and do an audit on your system, you wanna have this ability to call up all your facilities, tell them when you were at, last out there. Have inspection reports ready, have documentation of what work was done, put all the plans in there. So it's a, it, it's sort of modernizing the whole storm, the way we approach the stormwater ponds. So we were just asked to help facilitate this to get it off the ground. I would think in the future. Once the ponds are fixed up, that the town is gonna at some point in time have a stormwater person that will be full-time. Given, given the, the size of what, what's here.
When Public Works can, um, do any of this to offset some of that cost? I mean, Mark Sabine's been doing this for thirty years.
Well, I think Mark's had people out there, but we don't have any real standard.
Procedure?
That we've been able to, to track down.
But we could do that now.
It's a matter of getting it done. Can they? Yes, I mean, to. The large part they can't, it will just take more time.
Without, we have no baseline. Doesn't exist. And to try to pull this together without that, we're gonna muddle along in this for a long time. So I was requested what this would cost because this is the stepping point to go. This goes even into the ordinance part of it. Uh, we need this to figure out where we're going and we need an authority, we have no clue with these costs. We have no reference, we're not even sure that map you see is all the exact ponds.
Yeah, but an inventory would still, I mean, you'd still have to bid everything out. So, so that's.
This is just establish a baseline to kick off.
Not able to assist us at all and help us with some of that estimated project cost.
I think they could, I don't think that they can help establish the baseline. I think they can take this and maintain it going forward. But I don't think they can do it outright without the engineers' help, is my opinion.
How much technical training do you need? Like, could Jeff's team do it in the winter and off, off time? Not in the winter, but maybe in the shoulder season or something? I don't know, I've not done one of these.
Yeah, I mean, I do it for a living and it took me a lifetime of work.
I think, I think, I think that ultimately what you want out of us is the engineers asking them what it's gonna cost to bring them up to date. Once we do that, and once the ponds are brought up to date. All the trained public works that can have the inspection forms on there, iPads annually, just like the roads, they could give either value the roads. Value the ponds, what maintenance, you know, this is gonna be, this is gonna be a plan that's developed, you gotta kinda get everything on the even playing field. And then the town takes over after.
The intent certainly would be that the town would continue that inspection moving forward.
Right.
But this is just trying to get things up to speed. At this point and to have good, solid numbers. Budgeting purposes for, uh, that determination of whether, like, stormwater utility is necessary. So it's, it's a one-time expense to, to put us in short footing for future move.
So this would indicate the release rates to each one of these ponds? And how much is infiltration, things of that nature?
What we would do, Jack, is we would look at the ponds and see what, what work needs to be done. We would also look at retrofits, if there are any opportunities for retrofits that could get us M S four credits, do other work that, that's required. We would look at it from an engineering perspective at that point and add that into the, to the report of the recommendation.
Do you see a way we can mitigate any of the expense?
Well, I, I, I have this to say when I was just thinking about it. If the town decides to deal with option number two on Godot recovery, we're, we're not gonna spend the money that was engineered, budgeted for that. We could look at the balance between those two and probably still.
Keep in mind, we're, in our engineering meeting, we had a discussion regarding the cost of the Oak Ridge.
Right, that's true, yes.
Uh, release a great deal of that difference.
The savings.
Savings.
I was just speaking about the engineering work related to putting.
Yes. No argument with that.
Yeah.
No argument with that. And I, and it, to, to Ms. Zachary's question specifically. Don't get me wrong, we can, as an option for this council. We can have Public Works trained to look at. A, a certain amount of the work that would be necessary in these ponds. However, it's going to be a much longer process. And I'm, I'm talking months longer as opposed to maybe even as much as a year. And we still would have to rely on Gateway to have the, um, engineering estimates put together based on any findings. So there'd be a lot of back and forth. While there may be some savings, we're gonna lose a lot of time. That, and that's just a, a trade-off that this council would need to be, uh. Would need to consider.
One, um, item of note too, with these inspections, it's always good to do them during the dry season, so it's, um, good, you know, in the, in the hot summer months. Um, from a timing perspective to, to perform them then.
Any other comments, Ms. Clunin and even?
I was curious if, um, if the engineering team from Gateway was doing the initial baseline inspections. Would part of that include training of our Public Works Department? Some folks other than just Jeff, a couple, like a team could be brought out like the way we do often with, um. You know, Chief Ryan does with his police force, he has certain teams that are, are like the go-to individuals for a particular subject. That we could create a team in our Public Works, that really and truly that is going to be part of their job description, that they're doing this. But they would, may need that baseline education as well.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a matter of just bringing them out to shadow us when we're doing inspections and load the, load the inspection form on their iPads. And let them walk through and, you know, I, it's no problem, we do that all the time. We train Public Works to do different tasks in that level. Especially where it comes to G I S data collection.
I have one question, that is, I just keep noticing everything is between thirty and forty thousand projected, projected. It's really, that could be broken down, so I, we know how that forty thousand is being spent. So much for this, so much for this, so much.
Sure, yeah, we, we do a bottom-up cost estimate on every project and we, we put aside the tasks and the hours that are determined. We're glad to share that with you. We just, for, for simplification purposes tonight, we're gonna get into that detail.
Can it be a firm fixed fee, Dan, or not to exceed if you're billing hourly?
Uh, I think what we had proposed is this was gonna be hourly.
Hourly with that, not to exceed?
Yeah, I think here, um, since we don't know for an extent our conditions of all the basins, it's hard to do a, you know, lump sum type of fee, so it'd be.
Isn't it the same amount of hours at the, each basin or something?
I mean, it's access, it's the size of the facilities, I mean, there's, there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, what we tried to do was apply. Uh, you know, the number of them, times an expected inspection time, a review time, the information that's available. Uh, you know, the number of them, times an expected inspection time, or review time, or the information that's available. Uh, engineering analysis, opinion of costs, and there's like five or six major tasks. And and you just try to do your best to try to, you know, bring that in. And we try to be as efficient as possible with, you know, grouping things together and, you know, as much as you can. You know, get things done, efficiencies in doing it.
Yeah, and as part of this too, we looked at um areas where we've completed similar inspections for smaller number of basins um. To kind of apply, all right, where did we end up compared to what those projects finished at? Uh, to make sure, you know, it made sense from that perspective as well.
Is there a template already in place? You use a standard template, so we know what you're looking for?
Kelly just called it up. There's a, there's an inspection template that that we that we have that has all the IDs listed. In terms of what we would be hoping for when we're out there.
Yeah, and as part of the process too, we have updating this as part of our our project scope. It could always be improved or make, you know, make sure we're catching. Um, all the things that we want to look out and look at and uh things that are specific to this area, um, everything like that, so it'll be updated.
For the report is completed, will you be able to give us the prioritization of what really needs to be taken a look at first? And some projected costs of those things?
That's part of it, yes.
That's that's the big thing with the GIS is we can look at our problem areas that we are getting our stormwater complaints. And then we can pull up that area and say, our GIS shows three ponds in here. These ponds haven't been touched in twenty years. They're actually retrofitted. There's opportunity for retrofits here. It gives us that little baseline to go with that we don't have right now.
Any other questions from council? So we'll have to vote on this at the next meeting?
The last thing that we'd like to discuss and give you a brief overview is the project that's out. Right now, which is the upgrade to the uh the basin at Forest Oaks. Retrofit, so Kelly's going to give you a brief explanation on that.
So the North Meadows Drive detention basin is currently owned by the town. Um, it is located near the Pine Township and uh town McCamless border up near the flats. Um, it's in the Forest Oaks development. Um, so I have it identified here with an arrow. It's that blue circle on the upper side of the screen. Um, so this is also from our GIS map. So the project goal for um the North Meadows Basin retrofit is to reduce the volume and improve the water quality of stormwater runoff. Uh, leaving that town-owned basin.
So we were looking at some low-hanging fruit in this particular watershed because of all the problems. And this was one opportunity, one of the very few opportunities that's available to do so.
So um the picture I have shown here is taken from inside the basin. Um, you can see uh off in the distance, uh there's four end wells that currently come into the basin. Um, and are having uh letting water from upstream enter the basin. Um, in the center of the screen, you can see a rock channel. It's kind of hidden by grass. Uh, this is a low-flow channel that's indicating, this is a detention basin, so it's really controlling the rate of runoff. Uh, it's not really holding back much volume. Um, because in the next picture, I turned around and took a um, took a picture at the outlet structure, which is where the the water is leaving the basin. And that um rock channel, it just goes all the way straight to that outlet structure. Um, so right now, this is really allowing, capturing water, um treating it a little bit, and then it's really just being conveyed out of the system. Um, so during large storm events, it's a great place for water to stage up, but um as it currently stands, it's not providing a lot of water quality benefits. So our proposed retrofit includes a few different main areas. Uh, the first is to actually modify the low chi, the low-flow channel. Um, we will also be adding a four bay, um which I have shown here on our grading plan and a cross-section, which is just a. An excavated area down, um so we excavating down um about five feet, four five feet. Um, we'll be installing a spillway from that four bay to help control the water as it stages up and into the main area of the basin. And then um we will be seeding this four bay with a low maintenance mix. Um, and then as an add alternate, we have a soil amendment to that four bay bottom.
So essentially, we're splitting the pond in half. That would be the best way to look at it. The first half is going to be where we're going to take the water and try to settle it out and let it infiltrate into the into the earth. And then the second part is the overflow. When there's a big storm, that the whole pond will fill up as it does right now.
So the benefits of this type of retrofit, uh so the the modifications to this low-flow channel by removing it from that. Um, excavated four bay area, we're going to be, as Dan mentioned, promoting infiltration, infiltration of the stormwater instead of conveying it right out of the system. Uh, the four bay applies, provides additional storage for water that's coming in because it's going to be located where currently all those end wells enter the basin. And it also provides settling of sediment, um which will help with water quality benefits. Uh, the vegetation in the four bay will additionally help with filtering the water, um stabilizing that soil, that soil as water comes in. And also help with evapotranspiration as well. Um, and the compost soil amendment, uh which is basically a a compost soil mixture that improves uh infiltration qualities. Will be brought in um as an add alternate um to help restore and enhance those infiltration qualities of the soil. And aid with the pollution removal. And then this um also helps with increasing nutrients to promote better vegetation growth. Um, so on this side, uh we have our total uh opinion of probable construction cost with our total base bid listed. As well as the uh total opinion with that add alternate uh with the soil amendment. Um, so as Dan mentioned, these are, uh, we have had our first ad out in the newspaper last Thursday. Um, and our estimated construction schedule is about thirty to forty-five calendars. Um, so I wanted to present just a a tentative schedule for what we're thinking advertised last week and this coming Thursday. Uh, we'll have a non-mandatory onsite pre-bid meeting shortly after the ad, the second ad um goes in the paper. Um, we will hold a bid opening on May twenty-seventh. Uh, we uh tentatively accept, uh expect the contract to be awarded at the June thirteenth council meeting. Uh, with construction to start about a month after in July, um with the uh full construction to be completed right before Labor Day in September. So this will give us um time to construct this in that dry season. Uh, do you have any questions?
I do. Is there anything in your new system that'll help protect the water table from calcium chloride?
Um, not specifically calcium chloride, but we are providing uh additional storage to help pollutants settle out and be contained. Um, and settle out sediment, which is also a big pollution factor. Uh, but uh in- installing the add alternate with the compost amendment, that will help with pollution. Um, and filtering water, um more so than it does now.
Pollution? I'm worried about sodium chloride. Is there a way you can help mitigate the amount of sodium chloride that goes into the water table?
We don't have a way to quantify that, Jack. Um, uh, we we think that based upon everything that we're going to do here, it's going to improve that situation. Because as Kelly described right now, water just comes in and goes out.
Right, so there's nothing helping it.
So now we're going to have a process by which we're allowing water to filter down through a soil medium. If I know salt, it's going to precipitate out at some point as it as it tries to get down through that soil. So we don't have, when we do these things, most of the regulators are most concerned about phosphorus and nitrogen. To be removed from from the water that we're putting into the to the waters, the combo of not sodium chloride. Nobody seems to be worried about salt. It's not. Not in anybody's. Uh, but but I can say that that definitely this will improve the situation. I don't have a way to quantify that, but in my opinion, it's going to improve it.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you.
Yeah, I think modifying that low-flow channel and and cutting that out will help stop that, you know, salt from going at least straight out. Uh, I think it's the best application we can do here with an existing basin for a reasonable fee.
That's it. I know everybody's standing, have this all stormwater.
Yeah.
Any last questions for Gator?
Great job.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity to uh present and uh look forward to touching base a bit more on all these projects.
Thank you, Kelly. Mr. Sanger, do you want to continue with?
Sure. Moving on to the liaison reports, uh, Mr. Casey, the environmental advisory committee.
I sent a note out for everybody that the environmental advisory committee would like to have a tour of the recycling. Facility that we utilize for the town, and if anybody would be interested in going, if you let me know some dates, it would work for you. I'm suggesting we do it at ten AM. We could do it at nine AM if earlier is better, but I thought at ten AM would allow us to. Overrate some rush hour traffic. I think Jason's been on this tour once before.
Yes, as part of the UAC, I did the tour. It's a wonderful tour. If you haven't done it, I highly suggest doing it. Gives you a great understanding of how the town and our waste handler handles recycling. So highly recommend it.
And you also have the minutes in there, so that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Casey? And no questions, we'll move on to the technology committee, Dr. Rafa.
Yes, we had our last meeting on May fourth. And we have some good news in the sense that we finally picked the phone service and we're going with third generation. And I think Father and his group are working on setting up dates for training. Because we thought that was, you know, a really big thing. As far as the website, uh, the committee is looking at responses to the survey. They're going to extend the survey to the end of the month. In the process, they're going to look at some of the responses and they're going to start developing some focus groups. And I also think it's uh. We had asked some more. Why the corresponding letters that goes out to mention that the survey is there for people to get on McCamless and me. And I think I just saw that in the McMail that just went out, so. It's being advertised a little bit more so people know that it's going till the end of the month. Uh, enterprise enterprise software update. Uh, Trish is still waiting with two other companies, Edmonds and Springbrook. Is that correct, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, and right now I think the township is laying more towards Springbrook. And uh body cams are in.
The body cams have been ordered.
Have been ordered, I'm sorry. And uh. So what else? Oh, then there was an agreement with uh North Allegheny for the cable.
We're discussing, I mean, we're.
Still working on that. Other than that, is there anything else, Bob, that you think I should have mentioned?
I think you hit the highlights.
Okay, our next meeting is set for June fourth. Other questions?
Would there be, um, what kind of savings can we see with this new telephone system?
The budget for the twenty twenty-two year, there'll be a twenty thousand dollar savings. Over uh as far as the installation is concerned. Worst-case scenario, can we break even? Or potentially save as much as two hundred dollars a month?
Always good to hear.
I do my best.
To mention the good news.
I do my best.
Any other questions for Dr. Rafa? All right, next item is stormwater management at hot committee. I did send out. For summary, is there any, are there any questions? Depending no questions, any public comments on facilities management from the room? Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Sagan and I live on Parkland Drive and I, the stormwater management uh report and the public works report is very, were very interesting in. Uh, to phrase this, it's kind of like Jeopardy, in a form of a comment. The Blazer Drive work that the stormwater management or the gateway engineers talked about, I remember in the past that perhaps. Some of the developers were to be responsible for some of the paving or repairs, not for the storm, not for the culverts or anything, I don't think. But I just wondered um if you could think about commenting on that at another time, if Adventure or Continental were to be. Responsible for any of that uh work that was to be done there because. I I do go through that intersection quite often at Inglewood and Blazer Drive and it's very unsafe. And as they talked about the pork chop, so I just wanted to comment on that and give you some food for thought. Thank you very much. Thanks for the interesting report.
Thank you for your comments. Any comments from online? Yep, I yield to the.
Thank you. Um, we will begin the reports of the services committee. And we'd like to start this evening with McCamless Township Sanitary Authority, uh, Mr. Casey, if you could share any information?
Minutes are in the pack with it. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving on to the McCamless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, Ms. Zachary, would you like to share anything?
And the kind of report for our council's packet, the consultants going forward with gathering information. Little bright side is that we moved to arrange a meeting of the MIBA with the ambulance authority. For which they received a twenty thousand dollar grant from the MIBA for.
And I I I read in the report, um, I think it was all but one community had signed on to the um. The having the consultants take a look, have they signed on since the report? I forget which one it was.
Two, yeah. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, Franklin Park chose to uh continue to fund the ambulance authority as they have. In the past, as opposed to paying the consultant. And Bradford Woods uh did not feel that they could free up the funds to help pay for that. So Pine, Marshall, and McCamless are paying that cost. I, and again, I. Just to. Speak publicly to this, that proposal came in significantly lower than what we had estimated. I think we were, uh, we budgeted thirty-five thousand, I believe. And the the town's share is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirteen to fourteen thousand.
That's good news, thank you.
Moving on to the North Public Library Authority, Mr. Singer?
Uh, the meeting minutes are in your packet. Uh, the significant event was the Garden Gala. Uh, which was a successful one. I haven't heard any numbers, but it appeared to be a good time and I think the community enjoyed it. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Services, uh, do we have any public comment on the services committee? Nothing in the room, anything online? And that concludes the report, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clunin. Now, moving on to old business, um, I put this on here tonight just to hear council's uh opinion. Um, as we're going through the uh the zoning modern- modernization project. My opinion. We got off on the wrong foot and we can do better with our communication of it. Um, I know, I think the last meeting there was, we need to do meeting minutes and I think we're going to start those. So, you know, I wanted to hear from everyone up here. Is it going as planned? Do we need to put a two-week pause on it and give RJ and Michael Baker some items for improvement? And then they can come in two weeks and sort of. Give us that feedback on the on the changes we wanted to make? So I guess it's sort of, keep going down where we're going, two-week pause to make a few tweaks. Yes.
I think in lieu of the current circumstances, maybe we should put it on pause. But I'd like to hear Mr. Grimm's thoughts on that.
Are you talking longer than a two-week pause?
Yeah, because, you know, well, our last motion. I certainly can offer any experience to the process. But I don't believe that my departure is going to. Uh, have any significant impact in terms of. The the process moving forward.
Okay.
You know, I.
Just answer your question. I've just had some concerns.
I can always offer an opinion.
Okay.
Don't worry about that. Um, but, you know, and, and I would say this, if somebody had a question about, what I thought about one item or another, I'm still going to be resident in McCandless. I'm still going to be impacted by the zoning ordinance, so I will certainly have an opinion moving forward that I can offer to whoever would be crazy enough to ask.
I see RJ, uh, is on, can we tip her up? Unmute her? RJ, can you hear us?
I sure can.
Okay. Would you like to, uh, give your two cents to what Mr. Casey was saying? Does it need to be, does our departure of our town manager affect your, your Michael Baker's work?
Um, well, while we've certainly enjoyed having Bob, um, sit in on a couple of different meetings here, um, I don't think that there's anything significant, um, that would be altered or that would be a challenge based on Bob's departure. Most of the nuts and bolts has been taken, been taking place between me and, and the consultants.
Okay. Good second.
I have a question for RJ. RJ, are we come, is planning commission and council completely updated on, you know, we'd asked for, you know, information. Everyone was feeling like they were kind of being left out. Are we currently completely updated on everything?
Uh, I, well, if you're asking, like, do you have all the project status reports and everything, then yes. I think that between the, um, presentation that one of our consultant team members um, put on at the last planning commission meeting and, you know, maybe answering any questions that I can't hear. I, I don't think that there's anything that's been left out at this point, but, you know, again, like, um, like Mike said, if, if there's any room for improvement or concerns or anything, um, we're here to listen.
Are there going to be public meetings advertised?
So the open house is a workshop meeting, so it's not, um, something that gets like a traditional paper ad, but we did have the special edition of the Town Crier that's coming out. I believe that's gone to print already. Um, and we actually have a couple of pieces that, um, our local trib reporter has agreed to run to promote both the map activity that we have online right now, as well as the open house event, which you can do that and several other um, feedback activities. So again, not a, like a traditional, you know, legal notice, but we, we actually have some press um, coming in to, to promote this as well as our own materials.
And you see no reason for us to postpone this at all, just to keep going forward?
I, I'm sorry, I, you, I think my internet cut out a little bit. What did you say?
So you see no reason for us to postpone?
Oh, um, no, we're, we're right on schedule with at least, you know, the, the PR, um, for, for that particular meeting. Um, and then there are a couple other public meetings in the process, like for example, there will be a public hearing on sort of the draft as a whole. That of course will be advertised per legal requirements and then, you know, all of the council meetings that we would discuss that at planning commission meeting, those would be advertised as well. We haven't scheduled those final dates yet, just because we're not really far enough along to the project. So I don't think that there's anything that we would need to postpone because we're, you know, not quite there yet with those other meetings.
RJ, how are you keeping your steering committee and planning commission updated with the information?
So, um, primarily the communication with the task force is coming from the consultants and that's really just been targeted to, you know, they meet every other month at this point. Um, so that's really just been targeted around those meeting dates, um, sending out like, you know, PowerPoint or something like that ahead of time. But those project status, um, monthly project status reports, those are also being distributed to the planning commission. And, uh, Shelley Spawnholtz is a member of the planning commission and also is on the task force. So, you know, she's sort of available if they have any questions, um, at their regular meetings.
The information that you're sharing, the PowerPoints and stuff, can we get that shared with council as well?
Uh, sure. I mean, that's, again, that's something that the consultants are creating, so I just don't have that on hand, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't distribute that.
Yes, I, I think it would be beneficial that we get that information as well, just as we answer questions that come to us. You know, we're kept abreast of more than just the summary. So if there's any relevant materials that you're sharing with the steering committee or with plan commission, I think council would appreciate that, that same material of anything. I think that would be a, a, a benefit going forward, President. That council has also shared on all that same material.
Sure.
Joe, how much time will the planning commission be allotted to review the work prior to it going out for open public comment?
Um, well, so we talked about a couple of different things at the last planning commission meeting. Right now there haven't been any, you know, complete drafts of any sections of the code, um, which, just to provide a little bit of context, right now we have many, many chapters, many things broken down into many little chapters in our zoning code. Um, that's going to be unified more into some overarching sections like, administrative procedures. Just like a big district section, assigned section, a section for uses. So those are probably going to be completed, you know, one big section drafted at a time. Um, and the consultants have actually offered to share those, you know, as each major section draft is done um, with the planning commission ahead of, you know, a complete draft for public comment or anything like that. But that said, uh, you know, in addition to sort of as we go along providing those larger chapters, I don't see any reason why we couldn't give them, you know, several weeks, um, before their public meeting where they would be discussing the draft wholesale. Um, and they would typically have, you know, at least one or two meetings to discuss and make a recommendation even for, you know, normal ordinances that aren't such a heavy lift.
Anyone else have any comments on how to better the process or it's?
The, RJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are planning to have Baker at the next council meeting to provide counsel with an update, correct?
You've got it. Yeah, our, our project manager has agreed to attend the May 23th meeting.
Okay. Does it have a complete shell of what this ordinance is supposed to look like? So, and then as you fill in each piece, you know, in other words, kind of just give us the full structure with no detail, and then you can, as the detail comes out, start to fill it in and pass it along.
Yeah, so there, there was a slide actually, um, at the planning commission's presentation that described sort of, you know, like I just mentioned, those big overarching, um, sections. We're probably not going to get little bits and pieces, um, of the draft in between that in any meaningful form. It's mostly just been, you know, individual questions from the consultant, like, you know, give me a list of types of permits that you use in your zoning code and whatnot, and, and then that gets drafted. You know, after I answer those questions. So, um, probably the, the most immediate, you know, things that you could plug in to sort of that overarching form that was described in the planning commission presentation, and I'm sure that, um, our project manager could, could go over that again and show you, you know, where things are going to plug in as the project moves forward.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. President. If, um, planning commission and council can get their informational needs met, which we seem to be making strides for in a good direction, then I'm for continuing on.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Can I maybe summarize? I think we're, I just, I think we just need a community, everything I wrote down is about just communication and just getting the info to people. So whether it's minutes or sharing of information. So are Michael Baker's coming in?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. RJ, can you and the Michael Baker team put together sort of a, a, a communicate? I know you have a timeline, but maybe just a communication plan on how everyone's going to get meeting minutes and distribute it and, and when they're going to get it and stuff. And, and just to talk about, you know, I think what we touched last time about, well, not everybody's technically savvy to use McCandless and me, so how are we reaching them via print material thing? So is that something that's reasonable to do for two weeks?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I can have that ready for the next meeting.
All right. I think I accomplished what I wanted to accomplish. So everyone, I'll head Bob. So, okay.
Okay.
Moving on. See, new business, um, want to brief us on this one, Bob?
Yeah, this is, um, something that Mr. Casey and I had discussed and worked on. We met with some, representatives from the Old Inglemore neighborhood. And essentially what we're doing is placing a stop sign where you would have thought one would have been put to begin with, but was never included as part of the development. So really all we're doing is, was putting its, uh, stop sign in at the end of Old Inglemore Road at Highland Road. It'll be across walk, uh, across Old Inglemore. And, um, you know, it, it's just a, a simple matter of, but would be common sense just reminding people to, to stop before they pull out onto Highland Road. It's a safe, safety matter that we've discussed, uh, with the HOA and we think that this at least takes a step in the right direction towards a little bit of improved safety at that intersection.
Any, uh, questions or comments?
I have a question. Just from the, the aerial photo that I'm looking at here, it seems like it's still maybe like one of those stop signs that made my daughter fail her first driver's test where you have to stop and then creep. So is that what we're looking at here, that sort of situation?
It's, the stop sign placement as it is laid out is a reminder, essentially a reminder of people to stop. They blow out on the, on the Highland. You know, it's, you need to still move up and make sure that the, uh, the way is clear in either direction. And that's, you know, the, the traffic engineers put the arrow down on where the stop sign should be. I'm not going to argue with the traffic engine. I might add that there was an accident there about two months ago for precisely the same reason we're talking.
I believe that mine, it's a Highland can, there's a lot of blind spots in Highland.
I'm trying to look at the picture and see what the crosswalk, I didn't notice the crosswalk. It would just be two white lines.
Yeah, it'd just be two white, two white lines.
Are they painted or that, are they the, that fancy stuff that reflects the light, that light that reflects your stuff? What would it possibly say with that?
If it's painted, it's minimal. Um, you're talking a few hundred dollars at most for that place. And you're not talking a lot of traffic on that road, so it'll be a long last compared to other locations.
You'd like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the tenly identified ordinance number 1525, amending part five of the town code of ordinance's traffic code to designate a new stop sign intersection and authorize the placement of a new stop sign and crosswalk on Old Inglemore Court, northbound at the intersection with Highland Road.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Casey, uh, is there anyone in, any comments from the audience that's here? Oh, sorry. Your name and address, sir?
My name is Joe Langenhan. I look familiar to you because I appeared here in January. There has been an ongoing traffic problem for those residents who live in Old Inglemore, such as myself. And, uh, the complication of the situation is Highland is under the control of the county. Old Inglemore is under the control of McCandless. So in order to get it an effective solution for all of the problems, and this is just a step in the right direction. We had a very serious accident on March 18th, which involved a driver leaving Old Inglemore and was struck by another driver going eastbound on Highland. Both cars were totaled. Both, uh, drivers who were sole occupants were transported to the. So this is the very type of situation that needs to be addressed and needs to be rectified. This brings us at least halfway there. It's not just motor vehicle, but pedestrian safety as well. I was out walking a dog about a year ago and crossed over from Old Inglemore to Old Inglemore. And a gentleman came flying by, I don't know if he was a resident or not, almost struck me. That's also happened to some other people. We have more people now who are walking around that area, crossing the street. And people are coming in without slowing down. So by having that crosswalk, that is vital. So people know where to cross and drivers will know where to expect people. So I do thank you for your time and consideration and I hope that you will, have you already approved it then?
We're going to vote right now.
Okay, uh, this will make a big difference and I thank you for your time and consideration.
I have a question, please.
Certainly.
Um, I see a lot of trees from this picture. Is the line of sight clear from that area?
No, that is another issue.
And can we cut back those trees? Certainly look at that to see what.
You're dead on.
Okay, it looks, it looks like an issue there. So maybe we can.
No, it is. In the winter time, it makes it a little bit easier because there's not the foliage that is a problem. At nighttime, it's not so bad. You'd see headlights coming. But boy, between the hours of 4:30 and 6:30 on a Monday to Friday, it's the Grand Prix of Le Mans going both up and down the street. And I know Chief had, uh, his Sergeant Guzzo, is that right? Uh, put the traffic measurement boxes out. We had cars going 85 miles an hour, one, one extreme case, uh, and 75 the other way. That's a little bit on the unsafe side, but again, that, that, that is a different battle because that's also in the hands of the county, not just McCandless. But anyway, we do appreciate your efforts and support in the issue. It's been a pleasure working with Mr. Grimm. I wish him good luck.
Thank you.
And, uh, in his next affair and of course, Councilman Casey has been wonderful with this.
Question. So aren't these trees? The trees on, on both sides, is that?
I have to look into that. I, I believe that it's on the property of Old Inglemore, but I may be wrong. We'll have to research that.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public or online? Okay. Hearing none, we have a motion on the table. Everyone, uh, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, the gentleman to my right here has decided to move on and to another endeavor where he's going to be missed. He's been a steady hand, uh, as long as I've been on council and certainly helping me as president. Dedication unmatched and integrity unmatched. You will be missed, Bob.
Thank you.
So. So, uh, sadly, I'm going to ask for a motion that, uh, to accept Mr. Grimm's resignation.
I make a motion that we accept Mr. Grimm's resignation as common.
Second. Okay, Carolyn. I don't need to accept comments on this one.
Well, you can.
Any comments? Yeah, that's, yeah, any comments from the public, anyone here or anyone online? So, okay. Motion on the table. Uh, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lastly, uh, just any general public comment from those in the audience or those online of an item that was not discussed yet?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name again is Deborah Sagan and I live on Parkland Drive. And I've worked with almost everybody on this council in any way, shape or form throughout my career. So, uh, right now, um, I'd like to talk to you about, first, thank you for my recent appointment to the Activities Council, to the Advisory Council. I'm really enjoying my, uh, time there as much, uh, as it's been brief. Uh, and I'm happy to be kind of in charge of the fitness center and initiatives dealing with that. So we're really switching gears here from stormwater to stop signs, but it all involves safety and health. And so that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. I'm also a member of the, uh, North Hills Walk Bike Run Alliance. And I'll more about that in a moment. I'd like to highlight those. I'd like to highlight, though, the recent active Allegheny grants. They're offering opportunities to fund active wellness transportation projects in Allegheny County. And I started to continue to consider the possibilities of these grants. They have several, and I've talked to RJ and Bob about this. And I've been reviewing them with Ed Engler, who's also on the Alliance with me. And I sent the announcement to some of you back in March and then again lately. But the grants are due at the end of, the grant application is due at the end of this month. So the turnaround time right now is very short. However, it's a $50,000 grant. And since we have the Pine Creek Corridor, we looked at that as a possible alternative to transportation and bike paths. Jason and Kim were on the Implementable Plan Commission with me. I was intrigued by the possibility of a multimodal transportation area there. But at this point, I think it's a little short in the timeline to ask council to come up with a resolution. Although it's in the guidelines, there's a resolution all prepared right there that you would just, as Mr. Casey was saying before, plug in, you know, your information. So I'm new at this, asking for council to look at these things, but I think it's an opportunity that we don't want to take lightly. There's a possibility, this grant is just for planning, no construction, just a planning grant to look at RFPs for planners such as Paycheck that did our paycheck, that did our plan, or others, that's just the one that comes to mind, to plan something and possibly foregoing municipal boundaries and working with other cog members such as Franklin Park and Ohio Township to work with us together to make a connector between our McCandless Pine Creek Corridor and Ohio Township and Franklin Park, so that we could reach destinations that are important to all of us and work together on that. So we know that we have exceptional recreation facilities here, including North Park, Hartwood Acres, the Rachel Carton Trail, and community recreation and bodies of water that people want to visit, and they don't always want to use cars to do that. Urban areas are becoming less car-centric, and that's going to be spreading out to suburban areas as well. So we want to be on the forefront to have planning to attract new young families, new developers, as we heard in the discussion earlier, to our area. I think we, at this point, if council wanted to participate in this, I would be willing to work with a team at the Alliance to prepare the grant. However, I think it might be wiser, I know I talked to Active Allegheny today or this week, and he said that these grants would be rolling, that there would be grants in the future that we could also look at. But I would encourage you to review the guidelines that I had sent you this week and in the past. Look at some of the project summaries that have been applied for in between 2016 and 2020. Some are as simple as an open streets project. Some are as complex as a feasibility study to develop a walking biking route through communities. If council would discuss this, and maybe with Bob and RJ, because they have some knowledge of this as well, and they would like the North Hills Alliance to move forward on this, we could do that. It would take a resolution by council by the 23rd, and I'd be happy to prepare that grant with the Alliance, but I would need to know that.
Thanks for your comments.
If there are any questions for me, please feel free to contact me or stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comments before we adjourn to online? Okay. The council is going to adjourn to executive session to discuss personal matters where no other deliberations will take place. Meeting.